Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Ramper?
Yes.
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 Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, which brings us to the next item, which is Paul's City Hall update. Take it away, Paul.
Mr. President, members of the council, so I've been working for the last week and a half on the city hall fire issue and getting contractors line up and talking with our insurance agent on items to get City Hall put back together after the fire we experienced last Monday. One item that I thought we should come forward to you guys tonight and is kind of one of those rush issues is when we, when the fire was extinguished, we had a, an asbestos testing firm come up to the roof to ensure that there wasn't any asbestos laden materials that were burnt or that the firefighters were subjected to on the roof when they were extinguishing the fire. When we did that testing, we tested the vermiculite, which is a type of insulation that's under, there's a crawl space between the roofing and a concrete roof deck that has a vermiculite insulation. So we had the testing firm pull that material along with pulling samples of the roof deck itself. The vermiculite came back as non-asbestos, but the roof deck did come back with an asbestos material. We're 90% sure the asbestos material is a, basically a tar or a glue that's put between the roof planking underneath the deck. And so with that, and with that confirmation of that test, we, we were looking at abatement contractors because before we can do any repair work on the roof, that asbestos in the damaged areas has to be repaired and abated properly by a certified contractor. So we got two quotes from two qualified firms in regards to that abatement process, one of which is completely out of the scope of the project. It was $75,000 and I think that contractor was just too busy and wasn't really interested in the work. So we did receive a second quote today from a firm that was recommended by the testing firm to come in and abate the asbestos materials along with the vermiculite insulation. The quote came back at a total cost of, for the vermiculite removal, it was a cost of $13,800. For the removal of the asbestos roof decking, it came back at $14,460. So with that, I forward this information on to our insurance adjuster. They have concluded that they would cover 100% of the vermiculite removal. This is due to the fact that the drying process that needs to take place, needs to take place from the top down. We've been doing it from the bottom or the third floor up and that concrete deck. And they need to get up into that attic space and dry it from the top down. And so they thought that that was an eligible expense to be covered by insurance. However, they also indicated that they would only remove the damaged asbestos roof decking as part of this insurance claim. The League of Minnesota Cities has agreed to approximately $2,700 in abatement of that $14,460. And so what, what staff is asking the city council is if, in, in staff's opinion is right now is the right time to remove that asbestos laden roof decking that we have up there. It did test positive. We don't want to leave that for the future. And the way that the League of Minnesota Cities is talking is they would contribute approximately $2,700, which leaves the city responsible for approximately $11,679 or $680. And so that is what staff is asking for you guys to consider tonight. We're hoping to get this process started on Monday and thus the, the additional item onto this agenda.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions, Kevin?
I do. Did I hear you correctly, Paul, that they're only going to remove the asbestos from the damaged area?
That's the only thing they would be willing to, the league would be willing to pay for. We were proposing that the city cover the additional $11,700 to remove all the rest of it.
That's, I was gonna say, we should, as long as we're up there, take it all out of there. That's all I got.
Thanks, Kevin. Joe, you have something?
Yeah, Mr. President, I wasn't aware that there's going to be another issue on the agenda here. This is a special meeting, as I understand it, which is limited by law to what's on the agenda. The council can't take action on something that's not on the agenda of a special meeting without running into trouble here.
Yeah, thank you for that, so.
We can certainly put together, and I apologize, I wasn't aware this was going to happen. We can certainly try to put together an emergency meeting between now and Monday. I just, I'm just trying to keep you guys out of trouble.
Yeah, so maybe we vote on this Monday and the work can start Tuesday. Is that possible, Paul?
Yeah, that, that certainly is. We already have a scheduled city council meeting, so I can just put it in my, my report that I was already going to do.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's add it to Monday night so we can act on it legally. Thanks for that, Joe. That's why we pay you the big bucks. So that'll just bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is the temporary extension of premises. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. As you know, on Wednesday, May 20th, Governor Walz announced that the state's guidelines for reopening bars and restaurants effective on June 1st. However, there are two primary restrictions. One is outdoor seating only, and the other is limiting the number of customers to maintain social distancing at six feet and limited to 50 people. In addition, the Department of Employment and Economic Development put out an eight-page guide for bars and restaurants to open safely. That announcement was made last Wednesday at 3 o'clock and actually during the announcement. And then shortly thereafter, staff began immediately working on a recommendation to go to the city council. And then on Friday, scheduled this special council meeting, so thank you for doing that. So we met internally. We met the police department, fire department, finance, street, building inspector, community development, to really try to look at this issue from every angle, with the emphasis really being on how do we help our bars and restaurants open safely on June 1st while protecting the residents in the city of Brainerd. So there were many things that we needed to think about, from public safety to neighboring businesses, to the residential units that may be surrounding or above our bars and restaurants, to the extension of premises, including our public spaces, whether that be parking lots or streets or sidewalks. And that's just to name a few of the things that we've spent pretty much Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, trying to pull some kind of plan together. So please know that what we're presenting to you tonight is a recommended plan. We did this in a very short period of time to try to come up with these recommendations. And we really look forward to your input and your guidance. And our hope is that at the end of this meeting, we can have a plan put together that will help assist our bars and restaurants and the ability to be able to open safely on June 1st. The reason we wanted this meeting on Wednesday was that gives us Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday to potentially review these plans that we're recommending so that our bars and restaurants can open on Monday. While this information might look like an overwhelming amount of information for our bars and restaurants, we want to assure the council and our, our bars and restaurants that we're here to help. We're here to help them put together whatever plan comes out of tonight's council meeting. And again, trying to balance that safely opening of bars and restaurants with the, the protection of our, and safety of our residents. So with that, Mr. President, I'd like to turn it over to Community Development Director Chansky, and he will go through line by line what are, what we came up with, some recommendations for the council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you for that setup, Jennifer. So as Jennifer just alluded to, what I really would like to do, really just, again, this is, I know this is lengthy, but I really would like to go through it line by line. I think by doing that, it'll kind of keep things orderly and hopefully address any comments or questions that the members of the council have. As Jennifer said, we'll be taking notes throughout this. So by tomorrow, we can have something fielded for our bars and restaurants, so they can start putting that into action so they can be open on June 1st. I've been, had many conversations with a number of our bars and restaurants over the last week. A lot of them who called me, as Jennifer alluded to, within 30 minutes of the governor's order saying, okay, what, what's, what can I do? We've been telling them we're on it, that we have this meeting tonight, and our goal is to, by tomorrow morning, have an action plan in place to help them open on June 1st. So on, on Wednesday, we started immediately going to work, trying to figure, okay, what can we do? The state didn't necessarily help us out on this one, primarily because the standards that are set forth in Minnesota State Statute, Section 340A, which governs alcohol licensing, are not being relaxed in any way. They're still saying they're still being enforced. And we, what the governor pretty much said was that they hope municipalities get creative. And that was what we've tried to do, is get creative within the bounds that we are set, that we are given. Looking at, immediately set forth, looked at, what are the restrictions in place? What, what's, what could potentially be holding us back? Three main things. First is our zoning code. We have sections in our zoning code that pretty much all our commercial districts, patios, especially those that serve alcohol, are allowed only by conditional use. So as part of the resolution that was attached to this packet, we are asking that the council temporarily lift the restrictions in Section 515 of the city code regarding outdoor dining areas. Also was the liquor licensing. Again, we issue those licenses at a city level, but they are governed by state statute. So we are trying to work within state statute. And then the third thing comes down to actual building structures. So within the building code and the fire code, again, those are things that are set at the state level. We really don't have much leeway when it comes to working around those things. We can't just lift those restrictions and say we're not going to comply with them. So in this situation, again, we're looking at how can we get creative within the bounds that we are given. Also, on Thursday, late Thursday afternoon, Crow Wing County Attorney Don Ryan actually issued a legal opinion on liquor, specifically on liquor license temporary extensions of premises. And their request was just that the communities in Crow Wing County that are looking at doing something special for their businesses, kind of use that as a foundation to keep some things uniform throughout the county. I did have the opportunity, I spoke on the phone with Josh Doty, who's the Community Development Director for the city of Baxter for about 40 minutes this afternoon. They had a meeting about noon today, and they are passing a very similar type of permitting process that we are proposing here tonight as well. So we'd be very, very similar to what Baxter is doing as well. So to start off, first is to allow restaurants and bars to temporarily extend their premises outside as long as compact and contiguous. The compact and contiguous, that is the test that is put forth in Chapter 340A. So that's a requirement we need to comply with. The League of Minnesota Cities has come out with some guidelines as well, recommendations, and therapy as well. We must still comply to the best of our ability with Section 340A. And under that, I have a couple of points. Looking at the city of Brainerd, that first point was came pretty much directly from Don Ryan. But when you look at the city of Brainerd, we're unique compared to a lot of other areas around Crow Wing County, and specifically having to do with our downtown. A lot of our bars and restaurants downtown, they, their structure, their, their facility, their establishment is all the property they have. Once they step outside their door, they're in public right-of-way. So they don't necessarily have space to expand to. So with our recommendation is, is the potential ability that establishments may request to use immediately adjacent right-of-way for an extension of their premises. If they are requesting the use of right-of-way, they must receive permission writing from all immediate adjacent property, properties prior to submitting an application. The reasoning behind that is, again, because of all that parking, that right-of-way is common use. We want to make sure that we're not aiding one business and hurting another. We're trying to figure out, how do we help our restaurants and our businesses without, without hurting our other businesses who are also struggling? Third thing was that no extension of the premises within the right-of-way shall be located on a sidewalk. The reasoning behind that is we need to maintain those being accessible, ADA. And if I'm putting them on the sidewalk, that removes the accessibility of our sidewalks. And they should not extend out further than 10 feet from the curb. So if they are asking to use some parking spaces, they, we're saying not more than 10 feet out from the curb. Obviously, they can go wider, but no further than 10 feet out. Again, part of that is, most of that is for safety issues, to making sure that they're not hanging out in driving lanes. And then the last thing is because of the right-of-way, no glass products allowed. Again, that's a safety thing. So I think I'll do is now that we've gone through point one, I think what I want to do is I'll go through a point, and then if council has any comments, questions, concerns, we'll talk about it before we move on to the next point.
Any comments, questions, concerns, Kelly?
Just, just the, what appears to me as the obvious, and, and I guess it's, it's, it's not a concern with, with what you've written, Mr. Chansky. It's just that if I'm looking at a downtown bar or restaurant, how do they go outside their door and not be on a sidewalk?
And that was something, again, we, we discussed, and we just said, you know, going back to what the governor says, we have to be creative. And by going outside the door, and that's what we're saying, that maybe they can use the parking spots in front. And if we get creative, I know I spoke with Mr. Lengle about this today. It's not an ideal situation by any means. Maybe we call that section a three-foot wide section of sidewalk between their front door and their temporary extension of premises, part of that extension. It's not ideal by any means. I know it gives Mr. Lengle a little heartburn. But that's, as we, as, as staff looked at it, and we were trying to, we need to maintain accessibility on our sidewalks. That was kind of our option, without just saying they're out of luck.
Okay. Any other council questions?
Mr. Chair?
Jan.
Jan, am I understanding correctly, David, that we're not, we won't use the sidewalk, but they can use the parking spaces on the road as extension?
If they don't have space within vicinity, yes. They can request it.
Have we, excuse me, have we considered that perhaps we could close down a street? Like, let's say, let's say Laurel, because you know, that's a lot of business. Have we, have we considered closing that? And protect, you know, and protecting just basically everybody, no cars allowed?
That is something, staff, we, we did discuss that. We weren't at the time comfortable with making that recommendation to council. I know Chief Holmes and Chief McQuinston, there are some potential public safety concerns they have, specifically about getting emergency vehicles in and out of the street to shut down. There is, so there are some concerns. Their other concerns would be if we, if the council wants to pursue that. Again, these are all recommendations. So if council wants to pursue something else, you are obviously in the authority to do so. One of the concerns we also thought about, again, going back to the aiding some businesses without hurting the others, is, is if the business is still operating on, with curbside, you know, not all customers are comfortable yet going into a store, even if they have that ability, though they're still operating by a curbside. And then also, again, the park. If we only shut, if we shut down only Laurel, obviously, we still have sections of South 7th and we have Front and, and South 8th and other areas around. But if we start shutting down more than just Laurel between 6th and 8th, then we're starting to lose parking. And what do we do for the residents and things like that?
Okay.
Okay, I have two questions, and one goes back to the sidewalk that Kelly brought up. When there's construction or any other temporary thing taking place, you can, it's ADA compliant, in a sense, you just have ramps to get people up on the curb and off the curb. Why don't we consider allowing use of the sidewalks so long as the businesses provide the temporary ramp structures and they ensure that they're in place?
And I might allow Engineer Sandy to talk about that as well. He unfortunately couldn't be at our meeting on Friday. Assistant engineer was there as well. His concern, that the assistant engineer's concern at that time was, yes, that is something that's done when there's construction, it's just not ideal, and making sure that those ramps and things stay compliant. I'll let Paul speak to that.
Yes, thank you. So the biggest issue when it comes to construction and sidewalks is a lot of times we'll actually like detour our sidewalks. So that comes into signage and providing accessible, you know, talk boxes and things that you know, either, you know, deaf populations or whatever it is. And so, and it's also the, the whole enforcement standpoint of, you know, if, if we're allowing businesses to put up temporary ramp structures, whose responsibility is it to check and make sure the slope of the ramp is correct? And so that a wheelchair can, can legitimately get up the ramp, you know? In a construction project, it would be the city's responsibility. Are we then, you know, delegating that to businesses who have no idea about ADA, you know, laws, sidewalks related to slopes of ramps, cross slopes, things of that nature? So that's the concern I have about allowing businesses to put in temporary ramps and things. I think, you know, the extension of premise from a front door and allowing at least a, you know, I think ADA requires a 36-inch walkway on the, the accessible route. And then just having that little bit of barrier from a sidewalk is the best solution and probably the easiest. So we don't have sidewalk detours, we don't have to deal with temporary ramps and making sure that things are compliant with ADA.
Okay, I still think we should use the sidewalks, but I hear what you're saying. It probably, since it is the public right-of-way, the ramps would probably be our responsibility, even if we tried to delegate it to the businesses. And then I have a question, and I question the permission slips, you know, acquiring written permission slips from all of your abutting property owners. I just think that's a pretty tall task. Perhaps permission slips from property owners whose parking spots you want to use in front of their store. Right, because if you're using the two, I, I think of 9th Street Social Club. And there's no businesses on either side of it. There's no businesses until around the corner, there's Minnesota Tees. But he has like five adjacent property owners he'd need to get written permission slips for, even though none of those other businesses' customers use the two parking spots in front of his business. And it'd be the same thing that yesterday's gone. So I, I don't know if all abutting property owners, but maybe affected business permission slips. Because even with property owners, you're asking Dave Pieringer to give permission for all of his tenants to lose out on their parking. And perhaps the, the vape shop or the, the card shop or picture perfect framing. Business owners don't want to lose the spots in front of their business, but they should be the ones giving permission as opposed to property owners. That's what I think about permission slips. I think, I think requiring all permission slips is just a bit much.
Mr. Chair, this is Jan. But we're, aren't we still talking about public? Right, we're still talking about public. These parking spaces are not owned by the businesses, are they?
No, but, but, no, but a lot of businesses are very territorial about the few spots in front of their storefront. It is publicly owned, but the spots in front of their front door.
Well, I understand that too, but I also think this is, might be a very good opportunity for us to be able to see what the, really the parking situation is downtown. Honestly, I think, you know, it's safe to close Laurel Street. We, we, nobody should have to ask about those public parking, those public parking spots, because it's public. You know? So, I don't know, I don't, I agree with you in point of permission from the businesses, but I don't know, I don't think it's necessary.
It may not be necessary at all to get permission slips. Tam?
Mr. Chair, I guess two questions, or one question and a comment. First, the comment, I guess I agree about the requiring permission from the adjacent neighbors or business owners. You know, am I correct to assume then, if one of the neighbors did not provide permission, is that establishment just out of luck then? They're not able to, to participate or open to that extent? And so that's my comment. And then my question, other question is, if we're basically limiting them to the parking lot, or, excuse me, the parking spaces. I'm thinking of a business like Senior Patron's or something like that where, you know, I guess I don't, haven't counted the spaces out there, but are they able to abide by, you know, the recommended social distancing? You know, would they even be able to get close to 50 patrons? I'm curious if, I haven't run the math or the, the geometry on that, but I, I don't think that they could. I mean, this is going to require a whole lot of space. And multiply that by all the businesses down there. I'm wondering if a few extra parking spaces probably doesn't get us to the type of real estate we're, we're talking about needing.
And so if I can start answering some of those questions, Mr. President. So first of all, regarding the permission, if someone doesn't give it, does that kill the, the request? I think that's where we're looking for guidance from council. Is, do you want, is this, again, we as staff are looking at, how do we make this equitable? And if council says no, or is it, you want to just have certain? And if someone complains, there's a second step to that. So we're looking for guidance. And then also with that is, part of what we're looking here is we're recognizing that outdoor is not ideal for anybody. I think most people, when, when we were preparing for the governor's comments last Wednesday, we were anticipating he was going to say something like 50% occupancy inside. I don't think anyone was expecting outdoor only. And so with that in mind, again, we're looking at some of these restaurants. And again, right now, the kind of discussion is just downtown, although these recommendations are going to be citywide, is there are those businesses, and I've gotten calls from them, that don't have that space. So our idea is, can we at least give them something? And to allow them to start opening back up. Because, you know, right now downtown, you have Sage has a patio, Chefs has a patio. That's about it. And is it equitable for just Sage and Chefs to be open while everyone has to be closed? Just because their physical spatial parameters doesn't allow them to open and could affect, could result in their permanent closure if they can't start getting open and start getting traffic back into their establishments? We recognize that this is not an ideal situation. We're just trying to figure out what can we do to help our businesses start to open in some manner?
I have one more, thanks, Ted. I have one more question for Paul. How deep are our parking spots in the portions of downtown with the bump outs?
You know, I don't know that right offhand. So typically parking spots are about 18 to 20 feet long, but at the angle that they're at, I'm assuming they're probably 14, like perpendicular to a building. Just from the angle there's, or maybe even less than that, maybe 12. So that would be my assumption, is they're anywhere between 12 and 16 feet.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Does anybody else have questions on point one of a bunch? Mayor Bedeau?
I just want to make the one comment, as we're going through this, I want to make-
I just want to make the one comment as we're going through this, I want to make All right, hold on now. Try that again. I got me, who's muting me? Let the mayor speak. I, I just want to make sure that when we're going through these that we're of the understanding that not all scenarios work for every business, and that's just going to have to be the reality of this. In this situation, it's not something that could have been prepared for, and there's going to have to be some caveats there that not every single business is going to be able to accomplish the same scenarios or have the same type of layout that the city is willing to give to them. So I want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind as we move through these that going for this big, large blanket statement, we're going to run into issues almost everywhere.
Thank you, Dave. Let's go to the next point. Back to you, Mr. Chansky.
Mr. President, so the next kind of, next few points all kind of run together. What we're, what we are requesting council to do is empower staff, power the community development department to do an administrative process that issues temporary extensions of premises permits. Currently, we, we actually do have a permit that allows for temporary extensions of premises. And they go, they go to council with their, their design specifically for specific events. Like Chep's annual event or those kind of events where they're looking to expand a little bit beyond. Because this is going to be, at this time, we don't, we have no idea how long this is going to last. We don't know if the governor is going to start opening up indoors in two weeks, a month or two months. So we recognizing that this could be a longer period, this is where we wanted to come in with a few more expectations of our businesses. And then also by, well, the reason requesting administrative in this sense is to allow, so we can start cranking through these, getting things approved. So our businesses who want to open on June 1st can open on June 1st. So what we're asking is this application, which my staff is working on. It's waiting for the final, what's that, what council decision decides tonight. In that, they're going to have a diagram, basic diagram of where is it that you want to put your extension of premises on, on your property or in, in right of way? How big is it going to be? Where are your exit entrances and exits? What's your table layout? Again, that's to follow the Department of Labor and Industries. Sorry, Department of Economic Development and Employment requirements of social distancing. The reason we want that is not because we want to manage their social distancing, but it goes to a point further later on where what we're going to do is based off of how big their extension of premises is, is the fire marshal is going to issue an occupancy for that space. Currently, if you have a patio, when that patio is constructed and you get your certificate of occupancy, you are given an occupancy, you're told based off of the size of this patio, you can have this many people on it. So that is why we're asking for things like measurements and to show us where your tables are going to be. So the fire marshal can adequately give you a occupancy, obviously that keeps it under 50. But, but with the idea of if someone has a 10 by 20 space, obviously we don't want 50 people crammed into that space. And then also how it relates to your current building. We have requested copy of Apken's COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. We've already gotten some comments from council regarding that, whether that's necessary or not. Hours of operation, we want to know when they're going to be operating. Lighting plan, a lot of our bars and restaurants, they operate more in the afternoon or in the later evening. Noise mitigation plan that adheres to section 2014 of the city code. Again, if you're looking especially those downtown or those near residential areas, still being respectful of the people that live in the close vicinity. Patient fire extinguishers for safety reasons and parking plan if their current parking is affected by proposed extension premises. For those going in the right of way, we're not super concerned about this, mainly because right now we don't require them to have off-street parking. Initially, the gov, the county attorney, he actually had things regarding off-street parking. That's a little different for us when it comes to off-street parking. But if they are going to be using up a chunk of their, of their, they have a parking lot and shoving it out onto the road or somewhere else, we would like just to that they're thinking about where their, where their people are going to be parking. And then once things are approved, before they can go into operation, during discussions with staff, the fire marshal and the building official said they would like to inspect these extended, extensions of premises to ensure that they're adhering to building code and fire code. Because again, as I said, those elements cannot be waived. So we want to make sure that we're being as close as we can to those. And then the last thing before I stop, number five. The temporary membrane structures is, it was brought up. What if someone wants to bring a tent to kind of cover their space? What we talked about is the fire department already has a, a separate permit in place for approving those kinds of structures. So if they want to have a tent-like structure over their extension of premises, we'll have them go through that regular permitting, permitting process that already exists. And for now, I'll stop there.
All right. So I, I had a couple of comments to make on the, the COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. I, I don't want the city to be in possession of any copies of that. I don't want us to make people think we're approving plans that we're telling them they're doing the right thing, that we're endorsing what they're saying they're going to do. I think we should have a checkbox or a question, do you have a preparedness plan as is mandated by the state, not the city? Because I don't want to approve any preparedness plans. And then when I read this, this whole section here, when I first read it, I was, I thought it was just too much. Like a noise mitigation plan, a lighting plan, a parking plan. The preparedness plan, that so many plans we're asking people to submit to us, like we should you know, maybe just say code section 2014 of the city code doesn't allow noise after 10 o'clock. FYI, you can't be noisy after 10. This is a neighborhood. There's hundreds of units of housing here. I don't want to do the preparedness plan. I don't like the parking plan. Everybody parks on the street. And that's just my, my thoughts on the plans. Too many plans. Any other thoughts and new comments, Jan?
Um, I agree with you in the fact that, again, and the other question is, can we say that? I'm sorry. Can we say that you cannot be open after 10 o'clock? Can we do that?
I'll leave that potentially to question for Mr. Lengel. Right now, our ordinance says if you're serving alcohol, it says 1:30 AM. So I don't know, Joe, because of this is a special circumstance, do you believe we would, would we be okay to say 10 PM for these temporary extensions of premises? I guess my concern is that those that already have a valid patio, they're going to be able to stay open until 1:30 as it is. So that would be my concern is, is that, that fairness level of because, because they have a patio, they get to stay open until 1:30 versus these other people have to close down at 10.
But, but Mr. Chair, this is a special circumstance. And I think because it's a special circum- circumstances and we want to make it fair for everybody, I think we should be able to say that. And I don't know what Joe says on it, but I, I, I think this is a special circumstance because it's not something we normally would do. We're, we normally, we have a lot of this stuff. And I think it would take care of the lighting pan, it'd take care of the noise mitigation. And I think there should be just a copy of the Preparedness Plan there and Parking Plan. We, people might need to park a block away, just like we've said before downtown. So we should, we shouldn't really have, expect them to do a parking plan.
Thanks, Jan. Joe, can we, if we allow people to serve alcohol in the public right of way, can we tell them they can only serve until 10?
Mr. President, Council, I I think you've got the right at this point to modify the ordinances, given the, the fact that we're under these circumstances. What I've seen other cities do in lieu of that is to they have a noise ordinance instead or noise regulations that as of 10, 10:30, there's no more music being piped outside. There's no, there's no, you know, jukebox, nothing like that. There's nothing but normal conversation after that, after those hours. And in recognition of the fact that there are people living around these establishments, which probably brings it more in line, I'm guessing with what these existing patios do now. So just a thought, going to go that way.
And that's what our code section 2014 says. It literally, quote, no hooping and hollering after 10 o'clock. So it's, it's covered there. So maybe we just need to remind businesses and they don't need a noise mitigation plan. They just need to know what the code is. And they're, you're in violation of a misdemeanor if you, if you violate that code.
Yeah, wouldn't that kind of take care of itself? I mean, if you've got residents that believe that there's too much light being shed, they call, complaint driven, you check it out. Too much noise, they call, complaint driven, you check it out. I don't know if we necessarily need a plan, but I think like Council President Johnson said, we just make sure that businesses are aware of the city ordinance is dealing with lighting plan, you know, with lighting, noise, that sort of, and parking, that sort of thing.
Mr. Chair.
Ted.
I agree to your first point about the, the preparedness plan, maybe just ask that they have one. Wouldn't want to be approving those. And then generally agree with most of what's been said. I think with this particular section, these businesses, they have four days before June 1st and it's a lot to be asking. And so I think I'd be in favor of striking a lot of these in this section, given what you've said about section 2014 already in existence. And then regarding limiting hours, I think I wouldn't be in favor of that. I would, I think, I think there would be businesses that would say it wouldn't be worth it for me to even try. They're already so restricted regarding how many people, space. If we reduce the hours, then I think that just further restricts. And I don't even know if it would be viable for, for many of them. So I, I personally, I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay. And I, I think, I think you're right. If they need to operate till 11, they need to operate till 11, but just no hooping and hollering after 10, because it's against the law.
So, Mr. President, I'm just going to re-go back to what I, what I'm hearing is just to have a checkbox, yes or no, do you have a COVID-19 Preparedness Plan? For what comes to lighting and noise mitigation, this state, the statements that say you have to adhere to section 214 of the city code regarding noise and also lighting. You have to hear do city codes regarding the lighting. No parking, don't have to worry about parking.
If parking because of, becomes a problem, we have done something amazing here.
Any other comments from council regarding these?
I like everything with the fire marshal inspecting because there will probably maybe extension court, things like that. That's Jennifer.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm kind of scribing here while David's talking, so I just wanted to clarify. So I am going to delete everything A through F, and the only thing that we are going to have on here is adhere to city codes regarding noise and lighting. Is that correct? Just want to confirm.
Well, we might want the location of fire extinguishers.
And didn't we see a checkbox for that, that they do have a preparedness plan?
Yep, they have to tell us that they have a plan. We don't want to see it. Mayor Bedeau?
It may not be a terrible idea to, to gather up the information that relates to these as far as like the lighting and the noise and just have that available for them in a nice package. So that when somebody asks, they don't have to go searching through all of our codes. They can just look, okay, here's kind of the general guidelines.
That would be helpful. Kevin Stewart?
Yes, that'd be me. As far as the fire extinguishers go, I don't know if we need to address that because if the fire marshal is going to go around and inspect all of these things, he's going to recognize that right away.
Yep. Good call. It's like you were a firefighter once. Alderman Pritchett.
Remember.
Maybe instead of having a physical packet that we hand out to each of the businesses, we could maybe put links to those two parts of the code on the first opening page of our website, so they can just access it right away. And that way, you know, concerned citizens would too, if they're worried about the noise, then they can look and go, okay, they're compliant. I don't think they're compliant.
As long, as long as it, it reads in general English, because we all know some of our codes can get pretty, you know, hooting and hollering.
Keep the word in terms hooting and hollering, so.
Yeah, I would just, Jennifer, instead of just limiting it just to those two, just a statement to the effect that all property owners are required to, otherwise adhere to city code, including noise and light and so forth. Because there may be other things in your code that we're not thinking about that also apply here. I don't want to be exclusive of it.
Any other thoughts on the fire inspections or all of the plans we have eliminated? Nope. Moving on, David.
Okay, so talk about, again, those temporary structures, we'll go through again, through, we have, we have something in place for those through the fire department. This, number six, for the fighter holds any kind of liquor license. I want to pause for a second here and make a clarification that these requirements, these temporary extensions of premises, we are requiring these for all restaurants and bars. Well, actually all restaurants, no matter if they have alcohol. Again, because our code currently does require that if you're going to have an outdoor dining, has to be, has to go through a process. Also, we want to make sure that if they do it, again, we're inspecting it. And then when it's time for them to go away, that they do go away. But if they do hold a liquor license, which many of our restaurants do, and all, obviously all of our bars do, the license holder must provide the community development department with a current certificate of liquor liability, showing that the liability insurance coverage will extend the temporary extended premises, including public property for the duration of the time allowed. From a staff's perspective, this is a sticking point. We do, we do not want to be held liable for anything that happens, especially on public property in this situation. So if a, a, a establishment's insurance agent isn't going to provide this, our recommendation is the answer should be no. They don't get an extension of premises. There's just too much of a liability, especially when alcohol is involved. So that's our recommendation that if the, if the insurance, if their insurance isn't going to cover that extension premises, our answer is no.
And I think that's a good one, David. That's, that's a slam dunk. I've poured a lot of beer on city property and we've added the city as additional insured every time. And it's not difficult for insurance agents to figure that out.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Jan, I have another question. Is it possible that in our, in some verbiage, when they do come in for a temporary extended premises, that we let them know that it's temporarily not public property since they are being granted permission to use it? Because basically we're granting them permission to use it. Is there a way to, way to do that? Just a further, further understanding and if that would help insurance agent?
Almost like a lease?
Well, kind of, kind of like that, but the fact that it really, if they're using it, it's not open to the public anymore. We're just using, allowing this to happen in this timeframe.
This is something that we currently believe, and I know Connie can speak this way, we do currently require on our current temporary of extension of premises. So most insurance companies are aware that if they do any kind of event permitting, you know, very, you know.
The only thing to add to that is that as we've been talking, it is their property. For example, the, the, the open patio that Sage has, that is their property. Where this is a little different, but I would hope that they would be able to figure that out and work with us as well. Jennifer?
Mr. Chair. If I may, so I guess I'm going to go to, to Joe. Because we are talking about a lease here or some kind of lease. Again, there's such a fine line. We don't want to complicate this more for our bars and restaurants. I, I don't know. It's, Joe.
President Council, we can certainly work in language in, in whatever document that we end up providing to them, that this is being provided for this purpose only. And that they, you know, as part of that, we can ask them or demand that they and defend and indemnify the city for anything that arises out of their use of that property. Cause they're going to have control over it. And you know, somebody gets hurt for whatever reason, while that property is under the control, and that shouldn't be a city issue. But we can certainly put language like that in the document. That's not a problem.
I think we'll have unanimous agreement from the council to have the, some indemnifying language in the, in the contract. Any other thoughts on the liquor liability insurance point?
Mr. President.
David. Oh, Ted.
Yeah, not on that, but on number five. Can I jump back to that for a second? Just a comment. I mean, I would imagine we'll have several of those. Is that a lengthy process? I don't know if the fire chief is on, or is that, do we anticipate expediting that? Cause I mean, I, if I'm a bar owner or a restaurant owner, this is weather dependent in mid-spring, we're going to have, you're going to need, you're going to need to have those. To have an onslaught of those permits.
Tim, are you on the call right now? Can you answer the process of getting my 10 by 10 pop-up approved?
Yeah, that it'd be a quick process. It's just a matter of submitting an application and the application's relatively simple. And then just again, it goes through, you know, the drawing and the plan and the size. Making sure we understand what they're doing. If it's just to cover, you know, their space is different than if they're going to try to do some serving or whatnot out of it too. So, but it's, it's a simple process. And like Jennifer said, we're going to do everything we can to work with these businesses to make it as easy for them to, to operate.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for that, David.
And Mr. President, what we can do is we can tie these, we package these documents together and have things linked together. And what we can do is maybe Jennifer, you want to make a note is we can put something in there that if they're going to do this, we encourage them to supply, to submit for that simultaneously with this permit. Cause these permits will go to the, the fire department anyway for review. So if they want a tent, if they apply for that simultaneously, then the fire department can do it twice. It's bang, bang, they're done.
Yeah, I would put in the same place, we're going to put all of our information with our ordinances, sound and stuff. But yeah, maybe on the application, have a, have a line saying, if you plan on having a tent, you also need to fill out this permit application over here. Any other thoughts? Oh, Kevin.
Speak. If I'm an owner listening to tonight, I won't be able to open until July 1st. So I think we have to somehow be able to expedite things without, and still following the guidelines and the rules. Because tomorrow's Thursday already, there's no way somebody's, there's no way they'll open on Monday or be able to. I don't know what the true answer is, but if we could eliminate as many barriers as possible, make it customer friendly to do, I think we at least need to have, at least look at that.
How, so can we just have a, is it possible, Tim or David, that we could just have a, do you plan to have a tent? What size it needs to be inspected on this extension premise application without going through the formal other application?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be game for that. I mean, if we can just incorporate it all into one, that we can do that, you know, there's a, there's a permit fee associated with it, but I think we can figure that out. We're.
I think we can work on making that tonight.
Yep.
Good. So let's, let's get the tent applications as the same as the regular application. And it's only one thing. Good catch, Ted and Kevin. Now moving on.
So this kind of again ties into, I just wanted to call it out, the extended premises must be attached to the original licensed premises and enclosed. Again, we're being, for those that don't have area, especially in our downtown, again, being a little, we're getting creative and saying, you know, we'll be looking at obviously probably directly adjacent. So it's directly in front of your business. Obviously we're not talking about parking stalls that are a hundred feet away, directly in front of your business. And we'll call that as attached as we can. That they do need to be roped off, temporarily fenced in or chained off. The idea there is again, is they just need to identify this is the space in which we will be serving and people can be consuming especially food, especially alcohol. We just need to say this is the space. And that comes out again, chapter 490 about, or it's not 490, it's 340, 340 about they need to be enclosed, roped off, it needs to be identified. This is the area. And when possible, it's preferred that this be through the enter through the original licensed premise. Again, if it's possible, some businesses, it will not be possible. As I said before, we're going to have the fire marshal, when, when he gets these applications, he's going to sit, looking at their, at their plans, set an occupancy for all extensions of premise. One thing his staff discussed and we, and we talked with Tim and, and Dave Cox, it was that occupancy of the, of all existing outdoor dining areas shall not increase, exceed. Well, it shall not be increased outside of the fire marshal. So if they want to make it, say they, they, they have a 10 by 20 now and a week down the road, they want to make it bigger. Well, then they kind of, they've got to get that approval. They can't just be making things bigger or smaller. They need to get those approvals. We just wanted to call that out. And that occupancy shall not exceed the, that of the premise's current occupancy. If people can have, only can have 25 now, you know, we don't want to listen opportunity to give them 50 outside. Again, just to control, part of that was an equitable idea. Most businesses and outdoor, their outdoor space is not going to exceed what they can have inside. So that's really not a concern. And then the last thing, it's, it's, it's to be stayed during, it's supposed to be exist for the entire duration of the time allowed. So what we don't want these, for the most part, we don't want them coming out, coming up and down, up and down. Cause again, we want the fire marshal and the building official to inspect it once. We don't want to have them to keep coming out there to inspect it. The one exception is our downtown and talking about things in the right of way. If we're not shutting the streets down, we want to make sure, we still want to be street sweeping every Wednesday. And so in that situation, we would request that we require those temporary extension premises be taken down by 4:30 and then reassemble no sooner than 10. Again, to give the streets crew time to get in their street sweep. And anticipating if we're allowing people in the, in the right of way, we're definitely going to want street sweeping to happen. So again, on Wednesdays only, we're just requesting taken down by 4:30 and reassemble no, no sooner than 10. And from there, I'll, I'll stop for comments or questions.
Okay. I have one is who's going to be responsible for policing the occupancy? Is Corky going to have his guys going and doing head counts at the patio in front of Ninth Street Social Club to make sure they don't have more than 18 people or whatever small amount he can currently serve?
And at this point, what we discussed again with staff and Corky was out and we had Deputy Chief Mike Bessel there. And really I think the, with the fire, police department and Corky, you can correct me if I'm wrong, at this point, they're not interested in spending their time policing that, you know, as Corky said, they're already down five officers. I think it'll be more of a complaint driven thing if we're hearing that there's lots of people in one area or seeing it, we might, they might address it. But I don't, I don't, I don't think Corky's officers are interested in going, doing drive-bys and doing head counts.
Let's not have that rule then, if we're not going to police it or enforce it. Because we already have in this document, if we approve it, that your license can be revoked at any time. Kevin.
Well, I think we're doing a big favor for the small businesses downtown, whether it be a bar or a restaurant. And I think we have to put some responsibility on the owner of those places to say, hey, we've got too many people here. We're allowed to be open right now. If we screw this up, we might get shut down. I think we have to put some responsibility back on them.
And if I can, Mr. President, the last thing is part of what this came from again, is those requirements that are currently in the building code and the fire code that are set by state that we're trying to again, work with. And so that's where that also came is because the building code, fire code do require occupancy limits.
Jan.
I think also, I know that interns are going to be very busy, but I think, cause David, do you have an intern? I mean, you can just do patrol, they can just do patrols down there or even. So I don't, I agree. I don't think we should have a head council, we should allow, should have the owners be responsible. If it's found not to be responsible, then, then we need the property owners. We do have enough other, you know, if the interns are going to want to take a walk downtown or down the bar, or you know, where the areas are. Do that and get back to somebody.
I think they could, but I think we should just make it complaint driven.
Sure.
On if there's more than 50 people somewhere, and I don't see the reason to limit anybody. You can have, you can have up to 49 people. That's what the governor said. And damn it, we're going to allow you to have up to 49 people. And that's, that's what I think we should be. The space on which they can occupy, the size of their patio is going to dictate how many people they can fit there anyway, because everybody needs to be socially distanced.
Mr. Chair. I've had some questions presented to me and I don't know if it's anything we can do here, but what about, you know, like charitable gambling? And can people go into the bar, order their drinks and bring it out? Or are you going to have to have servers to do that?
It will have to be servers and charitable gambling can be conducted on a patio, but not inside.
Okay. So, so in order that the patron is not allowed to go into the building, other than probably use the bathrooms?
Think they can use the bathrooms, but yeah, no other business.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. The, 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 the deeds guidelines in here, they speak about allowing people in the building to use bathrooms, but do they encourage employer establishments to work to ensure that people don't congregate?
Okay. Is anybody opposed to the idea of eliminating the number of people we're letting in these patios? Which looking at your document is, I don't know.
Number eight.
Number eight. Everybody seems fine eliminating number eight. Let's get rid of it. Any other comments or questions?
Number 10.
I'm sorry. I was muted, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. Does our last paragraph here, 12 and 13, will that take care of the fact that once they can utilize the indoor, then the outdoor, the outdoor part is automatically discontinued?
Getting ahead of David here.
Yeah. Other woman Lambert, I was going to, that's the discussion I was going to, I was going to ask the council to have when we got to 12 and 13. So quickly on 10, obviously the council removed the parking plan requirement. With number 10, all we're saying in this one is that to be conscious of parking and if, and not to be, keep essentially keep your people from spilling out into areas that are not your area. So if we give you five parking spaces, make sure you're not spilling out into a six and a seven. I think it's more of a please be conscious and that we're not impeding other parking spaces that are available for parking. And then that then is kind of just the, a catch-all of all aspects of the governor walls, current and future executive orders, as well as CDC and Minnesota Department of Health requirements must be complied with as part of the temporary premise extension. We're not going to necessarily completely police those, but again, we're letting people know, we're not, we're not, we're not releasing those orders, requirements from those orders. We're just saying, we're allowing you to do this, but you still need to follow these orders.
Mr. Chair.
Jennifer.
If I may, if I could just go back to nine, the designated temporary extended premises must remain for the duration of the time allowed. I.e. if a parking lot is temporary extended premises, the license holder can't change back and forth from the parking lot to temporary extended premises. And then again, extension of premises with the downtown right of way shall be dismantled no later than 4:30 a.m. Reassembled no sooner than 10 a.m. each Wednesday for street sweeping. We are keeping that or eliminating that? I missed that.
I guess we didn't really talk about it. I think we're keeping it. I, I think it's a good thing to have in there. Everybody in agreement?
Keep it.
We're keeping it.
There are no comments on 10 and 11. We'll move to 12 and 13.
Do what?
Okay. So 12, this is a duration piece, the temporary extension of premises will be allowed from the date granted by the community development department through October 31, 2020. This is the date that the county is setting. And I know after speaking with Josh Dode and Baxter, Baxter set this date as well. Baxter also gave similar language to what follows, or until further occupancy guidelines permitting, indoor occupancy are issued by the state of Minnesota. And this is where to older woman Lambert's point, we're looking from direction from council is pending future decisions from Governor Walz. Once indoor service is allowed, what does council want the action to be? Temporary extensions are gone.
Let me get the comments on that.
Mike, Mr. President, Kevin here. I think this is a special occasion. I think if we go back to normal, all these temporary things we're trying to approve tonight, need to go back and go away. You're going to have certain bars, and I know some of them already are going to want to be out and have their patio stand out in the street because they don't have a patio. I think it needs to go back to normal.
Mr. Chair. I agree with that. I think once they, we can go back to normal, that the, the temporary extension of business should then cease.
And Dave Pritchett, you were agreeing with that? So I agree.
The only caveat on that is depending on what those guidelines are, but we could definitely deal with that when that comes up. I mean, if we don't believe that, that the ability to open would be sufficient to be able to serve those restaurants and we wish to keep these extensions open, we definitely could do that.
Mr. Chair.
Point.
Well, I'll just add to, I think, yeah, we can, we can say that it should go back to normal with the caveat that let's be open to learning some lessons from this. If, you know, if we find that this goes really, really well. I know I'm being optimistic. But you know, if we're getting a lot of people walking downtown and this is, you know, let's, let's not be open to being creative. But for now, I think we can say, yeah, it's going to go back to normal, but let's, let's keep the option open for, you know, learning some lessons through hopefully a silver lining.
Yeah, I, I agree with Ted 100%. Like when businesses are allowed 100% open, the patios end. But if we learn between now and then, that this patio idea was a really neat thing that the people just loved, then we as a council should address that and possibly change our ordinances to be looser on, on patio seating. David.
It's stated now, we're good till end of October, so we've got time to think about it.
I just want a clarification from council, if I may, of what is normal? Is normal 100% occupancy indoors? Is normal 50% occupancy indoors? What is the council considering as back to normal?
Considering at 100, Dave Pritchett.
I'm kind of looking at this going, you know, when you get those other occupancy guidelines, if they, they're able to go in 50%, then we can revisit this, you know, that I would say my, my gut feeling is if they can go 50% indoors, you know, the, the, the fallback would be to end the extension of premise, but if we've got something good going, we can definitely revisit that.
And if I may, Mr. President, I don't think it necessarily needs to be in here. I just want council to be able to have this conversation. So when those guidelines come, council is prepared to act accordingly.
Two, I got two things here. One, I think, you know, it's going to be October 31st, we're not going to have a lot of outdoor occupancy at that time. Just, we're just not set for that. But I would think I'd be closer to like 70, 75% occupancy before we were to take down the temporary. But I would think, um, I'd be closer to like seventy, seventy-five percent occupancy before we were to take down the temporary extension. Two or three is that, um, as everybody talked, this might be a good seasonal thing that we can do in the summer is having these temporary extensions of this premises. It, it could be some like, uh, that's, that could be a silver lining. But I think we should look more at seventy, seventy-five percent that before we um, stop the temper extension of premises.
Okay. Well, I, I'm thinking we could handle this because we meet regularly. So we could handle this like we did with the downtown parking. Where we met and we said, okay, we're going to lift restrictions. Then as things were slowly opening up, we were getting feedback that there wasn't enough parking for the businesses. So then we reopen, we uh, enforce the two hour parking limits. So I don't know if, I like the October thirty first end date just because it is going to end, but I think we just address it as a council each and every time there is a new order issued and we just keep it on our radar.
I agree.
Mayor Bedo.
I'd just like to make sure that we're voicing that to these uh, businesses as well that, and you know, at, at some point this will change and that we have the power to do that. I think that needs to be clear in this and that it's not just, oh, this is going to happen till October thirty first, you know. It seems a little bit like that in the language and I want to make sure that we're being clear to the business owners that this will change at some point. And there could be different reasons for it happening.
Good call. And if it's not working in June, we could end it in July. There's no guarantee for this. Even though we want it to work and we want it to be successful and go through October, we, we don't know.
Well stated.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think, I don't know what do we want? Any certain language from bullet point twelve in our guidelines?
That seems to be consistent with Baxter and the county did. I'd like to see it stay.
Okay, we'll just keep it as written and keep it on our radar as the council.
Okay then, Mr. President, moving to number thirteen. What we are requesting is that the council empower the community development department with the right to revoke or alter any temporary extension of premise permit for violation of these guidelines or by recommendation of the city of, uh, city of Brainerd Police Department or Fire Department. The reason we are asking this is because if there are issues, we want to be able to react accordingly. And not necessarily if, if there's an issue, we don't want to have to if it happens the day after a council meeting, then we have to wait two weeks to potentially deal with it if we want it to be dealt with the council. Um, again, I don't think as staff, we have any intention of being active police or policing of this. Um, and this is going to be complaint driven. If there are people complaining, if the police department is paying a visit to a specific entity every night, if the fire department is saying there's safety hazards that the, that the um, the proprietor is not complying with, is not fixing, um, then we need, then we're asking that the council uh, give us the authority to say, okay, proprietor, you are not complying, you are not managing your people, you are not making a safe environment. We are suspending or revoking your temporary um, extension of premises until you address these issues. And then there could be, uh, I think the one thing we could add if council wants, there is a um, where they can come to council if they want to, if they, if they want to challenge it or, or, or um, appeal that, that decision like we do in other ways. Uh, you know, staff said, we shut you down because we're having complaints. They can then appeal to council and saying, this was the situation.
I, I think we should add the appeals process, but yeah, I, I think this is good language to have in there that if the fire department or police department finds that you're, you're abusing the space in the public right of way and you're not following the spirit of what the council is trying to do here. There should be a way to enforce it without waiting for a council meeting. Jan.
Especially when it uh, addresses air concerns, health and safety. I mean, those are the two big things that if it's a health and safety issue, um, it should be, you know, shut down revoked. And yes, I have an, I have an appeal process.
I think it should stay in there also, but I also think this is not a lot different than how we handle things now. So let's keep it consistent.
I also trust staff, I mean Corky, David and Tim have all been in all of our meetings and they know they have a good understanding of the intent of the council and all this and we're not, our intention isn't lawlessness, our intention isn't to bug neighbors. Our intention is to allow businesses to operate safely.
Mr. Chair. Would it be possible that we would, could we say in here too, that the appeal process is the next available city council meeting? So we don't have we don't have, um, they've got that long time. Could we have that?
Any other thoughts on the revocation of license? Any thoughts on this at all, Wayne?
I'm just, um, this is really for the businesses that have a parking lot, this will be working, but for normal downtown businesses. When I was downtown, I, I have, I see no way this could work uh, for me as a business and all the rules and regulations that you were asking me to jump through as a business person. I'm just, I'm just very frustrated uh, with our governor and with this whole process, all the extra work that our city uh, employees have had to go through. And I, I, I don't think it's going to help a lot of our downtown businesses. If you have a parking lot, you already have a patio, you're going to be okay probably. But I'm just, I'm just sitting here listening and I'm just very frustrated as a former businessman. That's mine.
Wayne, do you think there's anything we could add, remove, change in these guidelines to, to better help downtown businesses?
Well, the language for them to go through this language as a downtown business person is just going to overwhelm them. Number one. It's got to be simplified, but I know it's hard for the city to simplify it because you've got to keep the legal requirements in there so that the legally, you know, we're not liable for so much of this. And uh, yeah, it's just, it's just, it's like I said, a lot of them are just going to be so discouraged and I, I don't know how to change it. Like I said, it's up to our governor and uh, it's, it's just foolishness. I, I just, I can't understand how you cannot open fifty percent and, and social. But again, yeah, thank you for doing this and going through this, but unless you have a patio and a parking lot, this isn't going to work. But, but I think we have to go through it. So I'm listening and I just feel bad for the businesses. I'm just, it's just the tables and chairs are going to have to be set out every day, taken in every day. You can't leave them out. People will steal them. Uh, you chain them. I, you know, I don't know how it's going to possibly work in a downtown situation, but I, I'm just, you know, I'm just listening. You're doing a good job. Thank you for all your input.
So I, you know, I guess just to react to, to what Alderman Erickson said, um, yeah, we, we feel it, we hear it. What I will say is that the commitment from your city staff is to help our businesses any way that we possibly can. Try to make this simple, um, and to try to guide them through this process, um, while again, keeping our, our residents safe. I think our commitment to you and our commitment to our businesses and our bars and restaurants is how can we help you get open while we still are working within some parameters? Um, so I, I just cannot say that enough. I, city staff is truly here to help our bars and restaurants.
And, and might I add, please, Mr. President? I agree totally with Jennifer and I commend you, city staff, for what you've done. I just, I think you've done a lot of work that is not going to help a lot of businesses because they don't have the, the room to do it. And uh, but I do commend you and I, I agree with you, Jennifer. I, I think that the city staff has went out of their way to try to help. But again, I, I, I just don't know how many hours I've spent. You know, frugally, but anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. David. You're muted. You're muted, David.
Two last things. Um, the first is again, as Jennifer said, we are committed to working with our businesses and helping them expedite this. Our goal is to help them be open June first. And if that means we're working on weekend, I'm working this weekend. And with that, you know, as many of you are aware, the small business relief grant from EDA went live today. We're already working with a lot of businesses, helping them through their application process. So we are here, we want businesses to know that we are here, we are here to help them in any way that they, that they need. And so that's, that's my first point. Um, and then I just wanted to add, kind of as we come to an end, uh, as we kind of finalize any comments, concerns, questions that council has. Uh, I, I didn't, I did, I will say I failed to add kind of what action we're looking for tonight. I think there's two things that we're that I would like to see from council tonight was first is um, when we're done going through these guidelines is to um, first adopt the guidelines per your changes. Um, one, and then we have a, a resolution that was attached to it um, to get, to kind of give this teeth, to adopt the resolution as well. I kind of wanted them separate. So you can say in the resolution, we talk about the adopted guideline. So we've seen the council, yes, you've agreed to these guidelines um, with your changes and then following that approving all of this by resolution. That's all I have, Mr. Mr. President.
Okay. Does anybody else have discussion on the guidelines? I, I would like to add one more thing to the, David's request. Since there is a permit fee on putting up a tent in your patio, maybe we could add to the resolution, a waiving of temporarily waiving of that permit fee. That's just my request. Any other discussion on the guidelines as we discussed? Kevin?
Quick question. How are we going to get this out to the bar owners and restaurants in Brainerd?
Want to go bar hopping with me tonight?
I'm game. To Alderman Stunek's point, uh, I actually have been already in communication with many of our businesses and so they are aware um, that we're working on this and I've been telling them to keep an eye out. Um, once we're done here, we will be repackaging this up and putting out as soon as possible. I said, look, I kept telling them, keep an eye on the city's website. That's where those will be posted tomorrow morning. Um, we'll be putting on the Facebook page, Jesse Earnster, who is our communications intern, is already working on, he's already actually drafted a press release. It's just waiting on those final elements of dates and things um, to put into that press release. So that press release is already drafted. Um, we'll be putting it out to all the social media and things as well. And then also sending it out, we have many contacts within the business world as well and sending it out to the, to them. So we will be sending this out to the best of our ability and then also relying on many of our, our partners uh, who have been gracious so far to also be sharing that information as they get it as well.
That works for me.
Excellent. Any other discussion on the guidelines? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the guidelines as amended by the council at this meeting.
So moved. Pritchett.
Second.
Got a motion by Pritchett, a second by Lambert. Any discussion on the guidelines? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Well, that's right. That's me. T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Absolutely, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. That motion carries. We have some guidelines for, which staff can operate. Now, next up is the resolution. So take a motion to adopt the resolution and if you're so generous, you could add the waiver of the permit fees for tents into the resolution too.
Lambert, a move to approve with the um, waiving of the permit fees.
Second.
Motion by Lambert, a second by Stunek to adopt the resolution while including language to waive the permit fees, the specific permit fees for the tents.
Tents, yeah.
Any discussion? None, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Resolution passes. Is there anything else we need to talk about tonight? Yeah, good work, everybody. We're all pretty much on the same page again.
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn from Pritchett, a second from Lambert.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes. Motion passes. We are adjourned. See you on Monday, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.